Buenas en Hafa De Guam, Senador Telo Titegri. This public hearing is called to order and the time now is 10 after 9:00. And I do apologize for us being late this morning. It is a Monday. There's always an excuse for a Monday. Just because it's Monday. Anyways, good morning to you and to those who might be watching from home, to those who've here before the committee today. Welcome to the People's House. For the record, today is Monday, March 17th. This hearing will be conducted by myself, Senator Telo Titegri, Chairman of the Committee on Economic Investment Military Buildup, Regional Relations Technology Regulatory Affairs, Justice, Election and Retirement. To comply with the open government law, notice of this hearing was disseminated to all senators and the public at large via email and published in the Guam Daily Post on Monday, March 10, 2025, and the second notice on March 13, 2025. The notice of this hearing was also available on the Guam Legislative Website and the Governor of Guam Public Notice Portal. I would like to welcome my colleagues who are joining us today. To my left is my vice chair, Senator Terese Chirlahi. Next to her is Senator Chris Barnett. To the right of me, to the far right of me, is Senator Sean Gamatata. And of course, the author of the bill that we are going to hear today is Senator William Parkinson. Thank you, senators, for being here this morning. And I apologize to you all for my tardiness. I had a doctor's appointment this morning that ran a little bit over time. So the following bills on our agenda today for discussion is Bill 45-38COR. And then later on, we'll have, we'll listen to Bill 50-38COR. But before we discuss these bills, I would like to set some rules of engagement for everyone to follow during the proceedings. I respectfully ask that we conduct ourselves professionally and respect to others' opinions. When you speak, please speak to make sure you speak directly into the microphone. State your name and title for the record-keeping purposes. This, I ask the panel members to remain in the room for questions for any additional testimonies as may be desired by senators present at this proceeding. Questions and testimonies shall be confined to the substance or nature of the bill on the agenda. Individuals who do not comply with these rules will be removed from the room and prohibited from further participation. So first, I'd like to begin by the introduction of the bill. And this is Bill 45-38, which is an act to add a new chapter, 94, to Title IX of Guam Code Annotated, relative to requiring those convicted of vehicular homicide while impaired to pay restitution to the surviving minor children of the victim and to cite this act as Bentley's Law. With a physical note. There is a physical note attached with this which we received. Give me one second here. Okay, here we go. Physical note, according to the comments received from the Office of the Attorney General, the victim's advocate in the Office of the Attorney General will calculate the damage that would be made off, paid off in restitution if ordered. Then there would be the cost if the restitution hearing, at the restitution hearing, at which the judge would find the amount owed and issue an order requiring the perpetrator to pay. At all this, per the OAG, would entitle the cost of the personnel involvement, absent detailed information from the Office of Attorney General and the Judiciary of Guam, such as the number of personnel and their total salaries and benefit costs required to facilitate such restitution through the legal process and judicial system. Excuse me. The Bureau is unable to provide an estimated fiscal impact at this time. This is from the fiscal note that we received from OFB. We also sent Bill 45-38COR to review by legal counsel. And legal counsel had reviewed with no recommendations, changes or amendments at this time. So at this time, I would like to turn the microphone over to the author of the legislation. Senator Parkinson, you are now recognized on your bill.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Hafa De, everyone. Thank you all for being here today so we can have this public hearing on Bill 45-38, which is also known as Bentley's Law. This is not the first time we brought this bill forward. I first introduced Bentley's Law in the 37th Guam Legislature because I believe and still believe that we have a moral responsibility to protect the innocent children left behind when a parent is tragically taken away due to impaired driving. Unfortunately, despite strong public support, the bill did not have enough time to make it through the legislative process at the time. But that does not mean we stop fighting for what is right. That is why I'm introducing it now, reintroducing it now. Because justice delayed should not be justice denied. As a father, this issue hits home for me in a profound way. When I first introduced this bill, I was not a father. And you know, it was something I thought of as a good idea for the community. But when I became a father, I had new fears unlocked. Fears for my mortality that I never had. Not because I was feared for myself, but I feared not being able to provide for those that relied on me. So I know firsthand the deep responsibility we have to provide for our children. I cannot imagine the heartbreak of a child losing a parent, especially to something as preventable as impaired driving. And while no law can bring back a lost loved one, these innocent children are now left without the financial support they need to grow, learn and build their futures. And we will make sure that doesn't happen. We will make sure those children have those things. And Bentley's Law is how we aim to achieve part of that restitution. Because there is no bringing back a lost parent. Bill 45-38 ensures that individuals convicted of vehicular homicide while impaired will be held financially accountable to the children who have lost a parent due to their reckless actions. This restitution will provide much-needed financial support until the child reaches adulthood or in the case of higher education, until they complete their studies. This is not about punishment for punishment's sake. It is about accountability and making sure these children do not have to suffer twice. First, from the loss of a parent, and then from the loss of their future. We all know that no amount of financial restitution can bring back a loved one. But we also know when a child loses a parent, the hardship they face is not just emotional, it's financial. The bill seeks to address that burden in a fair and just way. I want to thank everyone here today for your time. And I look forward to hearing testimony on Bill 45-38. As a father, as a senator, as someone who cares deeply about our community, I will continue to fight for this legislation because protecting our children should always be a priority. With that, I yield the rest of my time. Thank you very much, ma'am.
Thank you, Senator Parkinson. At this time, we only have one person signed up for testimony. And this is going to be via Zoom. And at this time, I would like if our office can... Okay, there she is. Hafa De, Mrs. Williams, welcome to the People's House in the island of Guam. I hear you are coming from, I believe, Georgia. Is that correct?
From Missouri.
From Mississippi?
Missouri.
Missouri, okay, okay.
Yeah, sorry.
We have a bit of echo here, but we're going to do our best to hear your testimony. As I said, I know it's important to you, very important to you. And of course, the author of the legislation. So at this time, Mrs. Williams, you are recognized. Please identify yourself.
Thank you so much. My name is Cecilia Williams, and I am testifying on behalf of the bill. I want to thank Senator Parkinson for bringing Bentley's Law to Guam. This bill is very important to me as I had created Bentley's Law in 2021 when my 30-year-old son Cordell, 25-year-old daughter-in-law Lacy, and four-month-old grandson, their son, Cordell II, were killed by a drunk driver. I can tell you firsthand the problems that families face because they have children that were left behind. And my husband and I are their caregivers. We are their primary caregivers and we are the ones who, you know, support them financially. But a lot of families don't have that income to do that. And it is hard, you know, mentally on the children and mentally on us when a tragedy like this happens. Then you add the extra burden of the financial situation that makes it harder on everybody all around. Especially when children are used to being able to do, you know, go places and do things because, you know, their parents supplied all this for them. And it's hard to get back into raising kids again, especially for the older, you know, caregivers, the older guardians that are on fixed incomes. So Bentley's Law, it does help families. I mean, nobody's going to get rich off of this. And it was never intended to make anybody rich. It is intended to help with school clothes, you know, to help put food on the table, shoes on their feet, you know, things that the kids would need. And also to help with the activities after school if they want to do baseball in the summer, even, you know, the after-school programs. These are things that, when I think about what the kids lose, these are the things that I think about, you know, their activities, their clothing, their, you know, extra food and things that is hard for a lot of families to supply that. I think this bill is great. And I think it's going to be good for many families. And I can tell you, the most recent state that it had passed in was in the Cayman Islands. Every, you know, every state has their version of Bentley's Law. We have so far six states here in the U.S., which is Tennessee, Kentucky, Maine, Texas, Utah, South Dakota, and then we have the Cayman Islands. And it's been introduced, you know, in several states. And a lot of processes still going on, just like here in Guam. I believe that this bill will help the people who, you know, do these offenses, which is completely preventable. I think this is a good learning curve for them, too. I think it's another part of understanding that this crime is not just a slap on the wrist. This crime has consequences. You have children involved, there are extreme consequences. And this, to me, is a, it's... And I apologize, I can't think of the word that I'm looking for. But it is a way for them to understand, look what I done. And I think they will learn. And I think other people, before they even commit this offense, it will give them, you know, a second thought that, okay, I have to find an alternative. I need to get a, you know, a ride to make sure that I am not going to be paying support for children because I killed their parents. And I think it's an overall learning thing for everyone as well. I think it would put a stop to a lot of the driving impaired. Again, this bill is very special to me. And it's because I believe it's what families need to help them. You know, times get hard and Bentley's Law is that solution to help these families. Sorry, my phone is doing something crazy. I apologize.
No worries.
But I am willing to answer any question if anyone has any.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much for taking the time to testify all the way from Missouri. At this time, I'd like to open it up to my colleagues for any questions. However, I did send an invitation to the Office of the Attorney General, Public Defender's Office, as well as the Guam Police Department. So hopefully, we can reach out to them as well as the author can reach out to them for any concerns that they may have or if they weren't able to make it today to at least provide testimony as we'll leave the, leave it open for these testimonies to come in. Would you like to, Senator Parkinson, would you like to open or would you like to close? Let me for closing or... Okay, then Senator Parkinson, as the author of the legislation, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, I don't really have any questions for you, ma'am. I just wanted to express my admiration for you with what you're doing. Your advocacy following tragedy is a beautiful gesture. And I can't imagine the pain you felt losing a child and having to take on this new burden. And so it's with great respect and admiration that I put this bill forward. And I'm truly, truly sorry for your loss, ma'am. But I respect the hell out of what you're doing. So thank you. Madam Chair, that's all I have.
Thank you, Senator Parkinson. And at this time, I'd like to recognize my vice chair of Judicial Justice is Senator Terese Chirlahi. You are recognized, ma'am.
Sido Smasi. I have no objection to this bill. This bill was rewritten significantly after it was introduced last term by our legal, based on testimony from the Attorney General and the Department of Public Health and Social Services at that time, who raised quite a few questions that they asked the legislature to resolve. So some of these things include, from the AG they had asked, when an individual is convicted, there's more likely jail time to be associated with the conviction? When does child support start to accrue? At the time of the victim's death? The time the person was convicted? Or when the person convicted is released from prison? Who will enforce the child support? The probation office, parole or AG's Office Child Support Division? Whose earning capacity do we use to determine the proper amount of support? There were also questions raised about whether to address surviving victims of other crimes. And the AG said this may open a Pandora's box to other crimes, such as aggravated murder, murder, manslaughter, negligent homicide and aggravated assault where the victim survives but is permanently disabled from the assault. And Public Health, it raised concerns because of their role in taking care of kids who are not able to be taken care of at home. They, they talked about the survivor benefits and what if the person convicted is under the age of 18? Who, who would this relationship default to? And then the incarceration payments and those things. So these were significantly amended. And the bill was routed in the last term in October with enough time, really, to get it out on the floor. However, it did not receive enough votes from the committee members at that time. So hopefully, this will see its way through to the end. And I have no objection to this bill. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator Chirlahi. I always have to pause to not say speaker. But at this time, I'd like to recognize Mr. Sean Gamatata. Please, you are recognized, sir.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And if I can say to Mrs. Williams, thank you so much for your continued advocacy for this important issue, not only for the country, but also for us here in the U.S. territory. So ma'am, thank you so much for your testimony today. If I can, Madam Chair, just a couple of things because they're not here. I'm hoping that the committee can kind of address just a couple of concerns that I have. First off, with respect to ensuring payments are made to the surviving children of victims, what information is available on the possibility of expanding the provisions of Bill 45-38 to mirror the powers of the Attorney General's Child Support Enforcement Division, including securing restitution payments through wage garnishment, placing liens on property, intercepting tax refunds and revoking passports? And also, Madam Chair, I also want to, I'm hoping the committee can ask, what discretion, if any, do our courts, the judiciary of Guam, have with respect to sentencing guidelines? Specifically, their authority to include restitution to the surviving children of victims? So Madam Chair, with that and to the, to the author, thank you for the time today for allowing me to be here with you all.
Thank you, Senator Gamatata, for those remarks. And we'll be sure to include those into the markup meeting, sir, and also make sure that you are invited to that markup meeting to ensure it goes in. At this time, I would like to recognize my vice chair of retirement, Senator Chris Barnett. You are now recognized, sir.
Sido Smasi, Madam Chair, Manana Sido Smasi and Biba Lunes, to the people of Guam watching us this morning. I don't really have any questions. I agree with Speaker Chirlahi in that the bill was rewritten to address a lot of concerns. And I also wanted to offer my condolences to Mrs. Williams on, if she's still on the Zoom, to commend her and thank her for the tremendous work that she's doing relative to this issue. And nothing further, Madam Chair. Sido Smasi, again, for the opportunity to speak.
Sido Smasi, Senator Barnett. I, too, would like to extend my condolences to Mrs. Williams and thank her for taking the time out to provide testimony to be here. Adonkulu Sido Smasi. And I'm sure that you have a group of people there in Missouri who there is supporting you as well and moving forward with any legislation and other states that you can provide the support to get other jurisdictions on board with this. We will do, that being said, we will have a markup meeting to discuss some of the concerns that my colleagues have, as well as to receive testimony from the Attorney General's Office, as well as the Public Defender, Judicial Branch and the Guam Police Department. It's important that we include them and leave the books open for that. So that being said, if there are no more comments from my colleagues, I'd like to conclude our discussion on Bill 45-38. My office will continue to accept written testimony on today's hearing within five business days from today, which may be mailed to my office at 238 Archbishop Flores Suite 407 of the DNA Building in Hagatne. You may also send your written testimony to my office via email, senatoratelo.t@gmail.com. Thank you for your participation. Create a great day and this bill has been heard, Bill 45-38. At this time, we would like to move forward to Bill 50-38COR. This bill was introduced by Senator Chris Barnett. And at this time, Senator, if you can, please recognize the title of your bill. And you have the floor. Thank you.
Sido Smasi, Madam Chair, for the opportunity to open on the bill and Adonkulu Sido Smasi for hearing the bill, which is Bill 50-38COR. It's an act to add a new subsection 8121.1 to Chapter VIII, Title IV, GCA, relative to temporary employment of retired government of Guam employees. What the bill does is it amends the retirement law for those retirees allowed to be re-employed in active GovGuam employment. It doesn't differentiate between retirees who are required to suspend their annuities and those who aren't. The bill does not allow for the accrual of annual leave. As we all know, there are a large number of retirees who are re-employed with the government of Guam, not just as teachers. And let me just kind of go back. So when I introduced a very similar bill at the end of January, it was specifically tailored to retired Guam Department of Education teachers who were rehired into GDOE. And I'd introduce this bill because in April of 2024, during the 37th Guam Legislature, I convened a roundtable hearing with the Guam Department of Education to discuss several significant topics, to include teacher recruitment and retention. And this was one of the things that we took away from that meeting was in discussing with retired teachers who had been rehired into the Guam Department of Education. When the instance came up that they were not feeling well, they would actually have to miss work without pay. And so in talking with a lot of the retired teachers, retired Tramor teachers, retired math teachers who have come back to really help alleviate some of the teacher shortages that were suffering from in the Guam Department of Education, that was really their number one concern is, you know, they're so glad to come back and help. But as we all know, a lot of these retirees, Biba Manamco, are up in the year or so. In the event they, they don't feel well, like I said, they, they take the day off without pay. So we definitely wanted to address that. And when I introduced that bill, I'm very grateful. My colleagues in the 38th, just a few days later, had introduced a very similar bill dealing with the retired teachers. And so I started to get phone calls from other government of Guam retirees who have been since rehired into the government of Guam. I received a call from a retired corrections officer who has decided to lend a hand and be rehired at a DOC. I received calls from retired Guam Police Department officers. And the gist of these calls were basically, "Senador, what about us?" You know, "We've also been rehired into the government of Guam and we also want the ability to accrue the sick leave." And so I subsequently introduced Bill 50-38 to address that and to really ensure that any special exemption measures relative to this issue are applied fairly and equitably to all eligible individuals, Madam Chair. With that being said, of course, the committee remains open to any changes, improvements that we can make to the bill. But I thank you again for the opportunity to speak and also for hearing the measure, which we did get some favorable testimony from the Personnel Services Administrator at the Guam Department of Education. I want to thank Catherine Ada for that. And this was something that was kind of noticed when we passed the budget bill. So prior to the passing of the last budget bill, which I voted no on, Guam Department of Education teachers were accruing sick leave. But I guess GDOE had noticed when we passed the budget bill, there was a thing in there that prevented them from doing so. And so they pulled the plug on that after we passed that budget bill. And it kind of created sort of a mini crisis for a lot of these retired teachers. And so that's why I introduced the first bill to address the retired teachers and then subsequently this bill, which again opens it up to all government of Guam retirees. So again, I thank you, Madam Chair, for the opportunity and Sido Smasi.
You're very welcome, Senator Barnett. We did send out invitations to the retirement, to Department of Administration and to VBMR. The bill was also provided a fiscal note. And in the physical note, it states that the Guam employees whereby retirees that are authorized to continue receiving annuity payments while being re-employed in the government of Guam shall accrue sick leave benefits in the same manner as active employees of the government of Guam. The bill also stipulates that all laws, rules and regulations regarding the accrual use and disposition of sick leave shall apply to retirement employees. If enacted, the affected departments, agencies will have to absorb the cost of employee compensation in terms of paid sick leave benefits accrued by the re-employed retiree for use by the employee when absent of health reasons, as well as to recover the 50% lump sum payout of accrued and unused sick leaves upon death or retirement of affected employees in the defined contributions retirement system. Absent additional information, such as the number of affected retirees, salaries earned, et cetera, the Bureau is unable to provide an estimated cost impact at this time. We also provided legal counsel to review Bill 50-38COR. Legal counsel at this time is only making one recommendation and is the location of the title to be placed in a different part of the Guam Code Annotated, which we will do during the committee markup meeting and ensure that all senators, as we do this markup meeting, will be invited to this for any will be invited to this for any concerns they have. That being said, I would like to now turn it over to Senator Sean Gomitato for any comments or suggestions and concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a couple of things. You know, I do see that in the fiscal year 2025 budget that it did prohibit government of Guam retirees from earning annual and sick leave, and think there's a change that will probably come from this statute. But just one thing, if I can, and I was hoping they would be here, but I just ask for the committee to find out for the record what efforts, if any, have been considered by DOA to help establish a uniform approach by the government of Guam agencies with respect to compensating retirees, ensuring that no one group of re-employed retirees receives annual and/or sick leave benefits, while others are prohibited from accruing and using these benefits. As an example, a retiree employed in the executive branch could be hired as a special projects coordinator with annual and sick leave benefits, whereas an individual employed by the legislative branch is hired through a contract or as a legislative Class II employee without sick and leave benefits. So just that one, Madam Chair. But otherwise, again, that's all I have this morning. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. We will sure to include that into the market meeting. At this time, I would like to recognize Senator Teresa Lahey.
Sidoz Masi, Madam Chair. I'm in support of this bill. It's... We've made several attempts through our budget bills and various laws to put incentives there for retirees to come back to work. Unfortunately, despite them putting in all their work and service to the government of Guam, the government is still very short of certain fields, including nursing, social workers, law enforcement, teachers. And all of these, we need to recruit back to work to the government. So we've allowed them to continue to receive their annuities. That's one of the incentives. We still allow them to continue to receive their sick leave, so that if they got sick, they would still get that kind of leave. But... So I support this bill because it would return that incentive to these retirees, who we only really allow these incentives for those retirees who are in critical need. We have shortages here. Teachers was really highlighted by Catherine Ada from DOE in her testimony when she said, "However, Guam continues to experience a limited labor pool of certified educators, making it increasingly difficult to meet the statutory requirements of the Every Child is Entitled to an Adequate Public Education Act. Retired teachers possess invaluable experience, professional expertise, and a deep commitment to student success. By offering them benefits upon reemployment, we not only acknowledge their service, but also provide a viable solution to our teacher shortage while upholding the mandates of the laws. This is applicable to every one of these fields who we have allowed by an exemption to be recruited back into the government of Guam and to continue to receive their annuities, and now hopefully, their sick leave as well." So full support of this bill, and that should never have been taken out by that budget bill. Sidoz Masi, Madam Chair.
Sidoz Masi, Senator Lahey. Any questions on my end? My good colleagues had some great ones, in fact, ones that I've thought too as well. And I also like to thank Catherine Ada for providing written testimony in support of Bill 50-38. As the good senator from Jony mentioned, you know, there is a shortage in certain areas where professional needs are required. It's just, we are not meeting that demand. We are losing a lot of people to the mainland, so this is causing a great shortage. And I greatly appreciate the senator for introducing this incentive bill to keep our workforce moving and keeping the funds on Guam, generating revenue for our island economy, keeping it on Guam. At this time, I'd like to allow the author of the legislation to close. Senator...
Thank you, Madam Chair, for the opportunity to close. And again, Bill 50 would apply to all government of Guam retirees who are rehired into government service. You know, I just want to take a moment to thank Mrs. May Mandiola and Mrs. Ivana Toviz for supporting the measure. And also would like to extend Adonkulu Sidoz Masi to all of our retirees who have come back to work in the government of Guam. You know, many times these retirees come back into government service, and with them, they bring that institutional knowledge, that experience that a lot of our, you know, our man hope in the government of Guam really benefit from. And, you know, when I talk to the retirees who come back into government service, it really isn't about the pay. You know what I mean? They want to contribute any way they can. They want to come back and help out. And so again, I thank all of the retirees rehired into the government of Guam with Adonkulu Sidoz Masi. And they committed to get this bill worked on in committee and to get it out onto the floor so we can address this issue sooner rather than later. Sidoz Masi, Madam Chair, again, for hearing the bill and the opportunity to speak this morning. Biba Lunas.
Biba Betnis. Thank you, Senator Barnett. I also would like to recognize a testimony that we received as well from Joey Paulino, a retiree. And he fully supports, without reservation, Bill 50-38's passage into law. So I just would like to bring that for the record as well. And if there's no further questions or comments from my colleagues? Okay, that being said, this concludes our discussion on Bill 50-38 COR. My office will continue to accept written testimonies on today's hearing within five business days from today, which may be mailed to my office at 238 Archbishop Flora Street, Suite 407 of the DNA Building, Hagatne. You may also send written testimony to my office via email at senator tellot@gmail.com. Thank you all for your petition, participation, and create a great day. The time now is 9:45. Sidoz Masi.